Good evening, directors, staff, and members of the public. I will now call this January 11th, 2022 annual organizational and regular business meeting to order. We will begin tonight by acknowledging that buildings within Minneapolis Public Schools are located within the traditional homelands of the Dakota people. Minnesota comes from the Dakota name for this region, Minnesota Makochay, translating to the land where the waters reflect the skies or Cali waters. MPS recognizes the original peoples of this place and are committed to ongoing efforts to educate the community and about the relationship the Dakota people have to this place, both historically and today as they remain here in their home. Thank you. I want to also acknowledge that Minneapolis has recently lost two pillars of our communities. Last week Mel Reeves and just today Clyde Bella Court. Both of these leaders will be deeply missed, though both of them through their profound impact, their missions will be carried through through the people that have loved, mentored, and taught. Please join me in a moment of silence as we honor and reflect on the lives and their contributions. Thank you. As a reminder to anyone speaking tonight, including during public comment at the podium.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to also share with you and the public that our colleague here, Director Nelson Inz, lost his mother this afternoon. And may I humbly ask you also, please observe a minute of silence. His mother also was a graduate of Minneapolis West High School, and she was also a public school nurse. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Inz. Director Ali, sorry, Director Inz. Okay. For the benefit of all of us, but especially for our interpreters, for those using closed captions, and for those who normally rely on seeing faces to help them understand, we really do need you to project your voices tonight. If you do briefly remove your mask to speak, please remember to put it back on properly after you've spoken. Finally, I would also like to ask that anyone here in attendance who did not register in advance online or with the board office, please make sure that you have signed up when you have your name when you entered the room in the back so you can assist us in the event that we do need to contact you for COVID-related contact tracing. Thank you. I want the record to reflect that Director Alameen is excused from attending tonight's meeting as she is following health guidance and quarantining after testing positive for COVID-19 last week. She is watching the meeting online and sends her regards to students, parents, and her constituents in District 2. And I also want to again from the board, recognize and our condolences to Director Inz.
Quick Polly, will you please call the role?
Director Ali.
Director Ali.
Director Suriel.
Director Suriel, no.
Director Inz.
Director Inz.
Director Jordan.
Director Jordan, you know.
Director Caprini.
Director Caprini, you know.
Director Polly is here, Chair Ellison.
Director Polly, you know, Chair Ellison, you know. Only one more call.
We will next approve our agenda for the rest of the evening.
Director Inz, you please approve of the agenda.
Thank you. The agenda is still in second, so any discussion. Director Polly, can you please give a motion to approve the minutes before us?
Director Polly, talk. Uh, Paul, John, let me tell. Minutes. Uh, the other, the other minutes. So, we go, we went to go. And then, the meeting, the thing, uh, to, uh, what the, uh, what, uh, get, uh, John, uh, the, uh, the, uh, uh, uh.
And the fact that you've given me the opportunity to do so was something I will never forget.
Yeah, it's like emotional.
Chair Allison, if I may, just for a moment.
Chair Allison, yeah, thank you.
Student Representative Deborah Meskow.
Student Representative Deborah Meskow.
That's, um... That's probably the last time I'll call you that.
That's what I'm going to say.
I just want you to know that, like many other students before you've had the opportunity to join us here on DIAS, your words here tonight and your actions over the last year have been quite impactful for all of us. Specifically, we had a conversation a little over a month ago about how you felt we needed to do things differently regarding our student representatives. And in that discussion, you said you were willing to continue to offer your support even after your term here on the board. And so I just want to take you up on that offer and know that, once we make that transition to having two more students up here, you're going to be a critical part of helping us. And as I've often said, too many times in our society, we talk about our students being future leaders. And I think it's been stated here tonight, you've demonstrated already that you are a leader. And you certainly appreciate having the opportunity to work alongside you and with you. And going forward, I just really appreciate your commitment to many public schools. So thank you so very much, and we're very proud of you. And I'm sure your parents are doing well in your family. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent.
Thank you Superintendent.
If anyone could please join me in thanking and congratulating Student Representative Mary Deborah Meskow one last time.
Student Representative Deborah Meskow. You're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome.
You'll be missed, Mary. Thank you so much. We're now going to take a fifteen-minute recess. Board Director, please be back here at six-ten.
Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent.
I will now call this meeting back to order and move to our next item, which is public comments. We have comments left by voicemail, as well as people who signed up to speak with us tonight in person. First, we'll have comments submitted by voicemail, which I'll now add back to play.
I'm going to take a look at the comments.
Gary Marvin Davis of New Salem Education. Nice to hear you. He says, "David, I've been teaching the students that you academic abuse every day. Your feet hit the ground." Extended comments at newsalemeducation.blogspot.com. Thomas Jefferson said that, "I know no safe depository for the blessings of liberty, but the people themselves, and if the people exercise not their liberty with wholesome discretion, the, uh, solution is not to take their liberty from them, but to inform their discretion to education."
This is from student representative Melvin Davis. You're going to look at the comments. And the students are going to look at the Salem Education Initiative. And the students are going to look at the Freedom of Freedom. And the students are going to look at the Freedom of Freedom. Thomas Jefferson, he's going to look at the safety depository. He's going to look at the blessings of liberty. He's going to look at the freedom of liberty. And he's going to look at the discretion. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the teachers. He's going to look at the students.
Hello, my name is Ayesha Asman. I'm an Ayesha Asman. And I'm calling to ask you to prioritize teacher diversity. And I'm going to ask you to prioritize teacher diversity. And I'm going to ask you to prioritize teacher diversity.
And he's going to look at the students. 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 And he's going to look at the bargaining junctions. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the teachers.
Hello, my name is Kala MacArthur. I'm calling to ask you to look at the students. And I'm calling to ask you to look at the students. And I'm calling to ask you to look at the teachers. And I'm calling to ask you to look at the teachers. And I'm calling to ask you to look at the teachers. And I'm calling to ask you to look at the teachers. And I'm calling to ask you to look at the teachers. And I'm calling to ask you to look at the safety education, like a career development. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers. 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 And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers.
He's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the students. 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 And he's going to look at the students.
And I demand that you prioritize commission agreement to protect students' color before we have to lay an off this year.
And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the students. He's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the students. Thank you. He's going to look at the students. And 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 he's going to look at the teachers. 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 And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the students. He's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the students. 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 Thank you. He's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the students. And he's going to look at the teachers. And he's going to look at the teachers. He's going to look at the students. And 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 he's going to look at the teachers. 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 And he's going to look at the students. 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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now hear the notes that signed up to sign up in person. And we will now hear the notes that signed up to sign up in person. And we will now hear the notes that signed up to sign up in person. And we will now hear the notes that signed up to sign up in person. And we will now hear the notes that signed up to sign up in person. ยู่ชูชิชิลูเพียนี่ตัวลูเสียเฮลเจยู่ชูทาซอเตนจัลลูเจชิเปยอยู่ชิเตนเนี่ยจัลลูนี่ตัวมันน้อเจนนฟิซาโมฮามิช่ารูเขาวันเดอีชงพรบีชชั่นโตสูปเปอร์เทนนั่งกราฟจ่ชิรงโตลูเจกันนะดิเฮียดีเปชิป่ออยู่อุลิจ่ายังเขาเวจิสล่ะมันจูชัวโตจังบลัคเทมบราวน์แฟมิสว่าชิมัวล่ะซักเกเจลิก็คอนแทรกนะโตเปเขาเฮียดีนี่จ่อลิงตัวที่อ่ะที่ไทยจังเปจังกันจ่อท่าจ่อว่าเนี่ยล่ะปะว่าจ่อ
ขอบคุณคัลลี่แจ็กซัน
ว่าจ่ออะตั้มูโตคัลลี่แจ็กซัน
อะเวอร์ตีเบกเกอร์
เจตั้มูโตอ่าเวอร์ตีเบกเกอร์เขาซีดดีโตเจเขาโมติเวชินะนี่ตัวเฮวตัวซากันเนี่ยว่าเขานะก็ที่เจขะน้อยังจงกอลีนี่ชิจูปอนจิมลังล่ะมันมัวตัวตุจักกันนะจ่อวันเดจ่เฮลลูดิสตรีกน่ะ
อ่าอานิซ่ารฮีน
เจจงดีมูโตอานิซ่ารฮีน
เอจยอวะ
อ่าเอจเนว่าจ่อว่าจ่อลูกก่อนนี่ตัวจัสติเนวเวอร์เจกูยังทาเขาคือว่าต่ออยู่ต่อละมันลิงอ่าเขาพรบีชชั่นเบียร์ period โตดิเฮียดีขะน้อยังเปต้องกันอะชิต่อเฮียอยู่ต่อมันนี่เขาสาลวิซนั่นเตร่เขานะเนี่ยมันท่าเจขะน้อเปตายเฮียดีนี่ยเกียรติซักเปตีเมตมีอยู่เฮียดีเปเซ็งซักเปจ่เมตมีอยู่ชิย่าโตอีเขาเกไม่สิเลยนี่ชิย่าตัวยังล่ะเจชอะเนี่ยล่ะว่าลูหล่อฮอลลูเอต่ออะซ่าเดจิวเฮาน่ะยังตุกเฮาโตเนี่ยเอเตเปเขาพลาบล์สกู
ขอบคุณคริสต์าโฮกันค่ะคุณค่ะชื่อคุณคริสต์าโฮกันและเช่นกันกับผู้ที่ได้พูดคุยกันในวันนี้ฉันเป็นส่วนหนึ่งของสตรีนส์นิวเวอร์และฉันเป็นส่วนหนึ่งของสตรีนส์นิวเวอร์ที่จะขอให้คุณผู้ที่จะรับรองสูปเปอร์เทนนั่งกราฟต่อสัตว์สัตว์สัตว์อ่ามันจ่จ่ล่ะมันชัยชัวชัยยังจงลิจ่าล่ะมันจ่ออีลูชงกันน่ะกชัยชัวชัยเมียกันนะบ่มุกเกว่ามึงชิลชัวดะล่ะน่าเนี่ยเฮยกันต่อชิชงล่ะล่ะเจเมียดูน่ะเฮดีเขาเกกันดะนั่นนี่เฮเขาเกจกันเนี่ยล่ะชูล่ะมันปั๊ดซึ่งเปดเมียดูล่ะต่อเกกันนะกันเนี่ยวันเดเนี่ยล่ะมันอ่าว่ามึง
ว่าจ่อรามิลล์แจ็กซัน
ทิติไลโอบิริอัค
ทิติไลโอบิริอัค
ค่ะคุณค่ะชื่อคุณทิติไลโอบิริอัคนี่จงจงดูกูยังทิติไลโอบิริอัคเอเซคีนตรีจ่เววันอีสตูเปเยล่ะมันเปล่าตัวชานน่ะล่ะมันเชียเกแล้วมันโตทั้งนั่นนี่ยเมียตัวชัวเฮนนี่ยเมียเนี่ยเฮยลูว่าเนี่ยสาตัวเนี่ยเฮยลูซีจงเอจ่อเนี่ยกูยังจ่อแล้วยังมัวกันต่อเขาทาเขาจ่อชัยกันต่อเอมอจ้องต้องต่อเขยซ่าล่ะจ่อท่าจ่อเฮจ่อแล้วจ่อนั่นน่ะมันเปเขยล่ะจ่อเนี่ยว่าอ่าเขยตัวน้อยู่ชูต่อล่ะมันจ่เปเขาเววันโตจ่เมียดูกันต่อที่ขะน้อเฮยเขาเกบิโอคูจ่อลูอ่าจ่เจเฮฮาลอนมันจ่ล่ะมันเฮว่าก็เปหมอกเขาเกลับพิซซัลเจขะน้อเฮดีอีเขาจงเว่ยเดเปย่ป่อตัวเดี๋ยวล่ะมันจ่เปป่อตัวนั่นก็เฮาชิต่อฮั่นน่ะจ่อล่ะมันกันนะก็ที่เอเนี่ยจิโตอีชงล่ะยังชูเสียกูเฮยนี่น้อนะจมัวนี่ล่ะมันจ่อพรบีชชั่นเปยอยู่ชูต่มันจ่เกลับมันจัวเปอุลินี่น่ะจ่เปจ่เมียนี่ยมัวอีเขาเอเปเฮชิมัวล่ะเปต้องกันกูจ่เมียซ่าจ่จ่เอาเซนจ่เมียมูกันดะว่าเกกันล่ะต่อเขาเกกันต่อช่องชับล่ะเปจ่เมียนี่ตัวช่วงอ๊อพันนั่นน้อมันว่าก็ต่อเขาคอนเทรนน์อีลูชงน่ะว่าจ่อนิกิมาเลฟี่อัมสตรันนี่จงจงดูกูยังนิกิมาเลฟี่อัมสตรันโตสตูไรสกุลีช่อช่วยปูนน้อกูเฮยกูดิซ่าชัวดะอีเดนต่อตัวนี่ชอลิซูโตอ๊อเปย์ว่าต่าล่ะน้อเว่ยดูเนี่ยท่าจ่อเอเกนน่ะอะบ่จิมูบ่ชัวเซ็มจิเฮยซ่าเดี๋ยวเฮเฮเขาเกจิงจังล่ะนู่เนี่ยเขานี่ตัวเมเนี่ยปุลีแล้วยังล่ะมันจ่อเยเฮเทว่าชิต่อจงล่ะมันป่าล่ะเนี่ยเจขะน้อเนี่ยเฮเขาท่าสูปเปอร์เทนนั่งกราฟล่ะมันว่าน่ะเนี่ยจ่เฮยดีดูล่ะเฮเจเปยังยังว่าชิต่อเอต่อเอต่อแล้วเขาเกยังจูดมันล่ะเทนนี่ชิโตล่ะมันว่าต่อจ่อเลยขะน้อขะน้อเฮจ่จ่ายเปยอยู่ชูต่ล่ะมันมอนเกลับพิซซัลล่ะโตน่ะกูยังเฮอฮอนจิเปยอยู่ชูโตเฮก็สูปเปอร์เทนนั่งกราฟมันเขาเกแล้วมันเกลับพิซซัลยังกูลีเนี่ยจ่ล่ะมันว่าชิต่อเอเขาล่ะมันช่องล่ะมันจ่เปจ่เมียท่าต่อแล้วท่าตัวเลยที่เขาเกลับมันจ่อซีนน่ะยังฮีต่อจ่อล่ะเทเปป่อเดเขาเกมัวฮอลลูเอต่ออ่าอ่ายังจแล้วมัวฮอลลูจังน่ะจ่ยังฮีต่อล่ะล่ะล่ะมันก็เปชิซัลว่าเฮาเซเลดีเปเฮียดีนี่ตัวน่ะลูจ่ายนี่มัวเฮแพนเดมเมียต้องกันดูน้อยังชิย่าลูเสียเฮลล่ะมันมลังแต่ชิวันนี่เฮล่ะเฮวเฮน้อเจจ่าล่ะนี่เฮจ่อโอโอจ่าจ่เปเฮยนี่น้อจ่เนี่ยท่าจ่อเนี่ยจ่ต่อชิชงเฮยนี่ขะน้อยังอีเขาเนี่ยเขาอยู่ชูเสียเปว่าจ่อ Kulia Prango，顾摸贵谁啊，了么，做一图呢，谁，你啊，到Washburn High School，呃，都拿钱多啊 诶，你都给，一图呢，啥都，都那么，一图 这顾通晒 just system policy，给钱，那，没摸，嘛，呢，呀， 顾包的，因，都塌了，我好，program was C R C，Center of Resolution of Conflict，no 我没扭敲到的，这个呢，呢，去操，我贼了呢 他，别人还，我，你懂的，也一样够力，好racial justice network，都还贴，我叫 被了么，小，亲呢，嘿 directors，我们还，叫他咯，他叫我，我不要去 thank you 我叫 他，他谁，好school calendar，呢，你有木用，叫他，被路行，当队呢，superintendent 顾啥，还有，呃，容歇，就，你叫，你，他，我叫，你，诶，对，摸了，可以，被呢，director，Minneapolis Public School，Tony Fisher， 他个小谢，director Fisher，到，被他，摸呢，你啊，了么，to，National Interdisciplinary，呃，Board of Director， 叫容歇，还呢 这，你呢，也到，包的，叫school board，呢，了，呃，对，头，有，后路呢，他叫你，摸给， 你，包，被叫，那，哭，叫，呢，我后路，叫，他，哭，叫，secretary，叫E S P， 顾包，这，修凹趴那个，哦， 那，比，我，操，civil rights，头，了，路，你啊，他，摸，能够，到，相似， 被，了么，还，咋，好，civil rights，好，叫，我，card，about，you，and，doctor，king， 到，到，苏，了么，说，可能，顾啥，个，你，都，顾，公，了么，啥，错，对，空，诶，like to 对，我，领导，归啊，啥，叫，了么，还，贴，就，叫，more，贴，叫，let me，be，something，你，了么，还，错， 还得，顾，八，team，呢，被，到，我，库，你，就，叫，public health，派，呢，呢，谁， 他，你，都，呢，看，你，都，呢，路，district，呢， in person，好，摸，可，呢，顶，只，顶，摸，呢，好，头，一个，能，住，这，到，这，多，差，呢， 就，他，被，了么，还，咋，我，好，给，你， 他，被，叫，public health，派，呢，都，还，到，被，他，好，好，为，个，救， 他，还得，谁，呃，是，里，叫，恁， 呃，好，为，个，救，呢，进来，到，看，到， 被，我，有，摸，叫，恁，我，后路，走， 好，有，屋里，家，被，他，里，好，我，到，摸，好，他们，呢，给，
thank you, madam chair
我叫，the manager 嗯，
apologize, director Cerio, I didn't hear your question, I thought you said, are we allowing volunteers in the building?
we are, as a district the principals allowed to say that they are not allowing
还得，屋里，呢，呢，部，部，叫，啊， 呃，director Jordan，can he
yeah, thank you, chair Alison
嗯，叫，chair Alison
um, one of the things I'm wondering about one is that we are experiencing high anxiety among our students
One is that we are experiencing high anxiety among our students. We have had COVID already, a really reluctant return of school classroom. And I think one of the things that has played a role. Is that the anxiety, whether they're in a larger school or a smaller school. And communication efforts that we have. And with online learning, I know we have to. But now, because of that, you know, I met conversation with parents who are refusing to send their children to school. Their child is not necessarily. Feeling that they're, you know, they're safe to go to school. And so, you know, and I told him, as I get to your friend's life. You know, if you want your child home, you feel your child is not safe. The guns sent them. Their assignments are posted in Google Classroom. Let their teachers know, you know. So, my, you know, my daughter, my son, et cetera, et cetera, doesn't feel welcome going to school. Because they have already had COVID, or they know a lot of people that have had social anxiety building up. We also have that growing among our staff as well. So, I mean, I know we are short-staffed with mental health services for students. But moving forward, how are we going to move forward with assisting those students with, you know? Because I know Dr. Ulster almost said, you know, this, we're in the middle of a virtual Omicron blizzard. And I, you know, terrified. So this is going to get worse before it gets better. And, you know, and I think we're seeing, I think we're going to see a larger number of students. Who are not going to school, but they don't feel safe. And, and I think moving forward, you know, we have to have a solid plan. And I know I can't make peace time orders, and it's not go straight to this learning. We should have some type of an online option. And I know, like you've said before, we are full. But how are we going to provide, you know, mitigation efforts to, to mentally support our students? Who do not want to come back? Some parents have told me they don't want their kids back at all. Because they just are not feeling safe. Because they just are not feeling safe. Social anxiety, you know, high. Other, you know, and like you said, other students want to be in schools. You know, they, they want to be in the classroom. But also two of their teacher supports in the classroom. You know, you know, you have teachers that, that, you know, sometimes they, they have a bunch of classes together. And they're meeting in an auditorium, or they're meeting, you know, elsewhere than a classroom, you know. And, yeah, I, you know, I know what we're dealing with. Not as much as other people do, but, you know, I just am wondering, you know, how detrimental is that to our students' learning? If we have to, you don't have enough subs, and we're pooling classes together. How detrimental is that to our students? So, I know it's a lot of, you know, stuff to say at once. Thank you. Yeah, Director Jordan, I appreciate the, the question, and I think that's exactly what I was going to ask. I'll give you some, some numbers, you know, again. What we're finding is that it is not so much the, the safety around COVID in our schools. We have mitigation strategies that we've implemented for many, many months now. And, you know, we're from our testing or vaccination that we have. Our mass mandates that we have. Or filtration, or, or filter systems in our buildings. As well as just the consistency in terms of expectations around how we are trying to contact map and trace. Those are all the recommended mitigation strategies that the Department of Health is, is asking us to do. So it's not so much the concern around COVID transmission in the building. Although that there's not this miss. The anxiety that people have, the fear and the concerns that are very, very real. What we're seeing is around the consistent staff available to provide high-quality instruction. So we have absences. Today, for example, we had four hundred absences of our licensed teacher staff. And after, as you mentioned, where they combined classes, or perhaps they had educators, teachers cover, cover classes during their prep period. We still had, in many cases across the district, only about a seventy percent to ninety percent coverage of, of absences. So we're not even covering all the absences. Even after they make those adjustments. Combining classes and covering, um, prep, you know, covering classes from their prep period. And so that is extremely concerning. The unfortunate thing is that we can't add more teachers to address that. We have central office staff that we deploy. All of our central office staff get deployed on a daily basis. We can deploy people except those who have to do very specific work to keep us operational. I will also tell you, you mentioned student concerns about just attendance. So we have our student attendance that's been ranging from anywhere from forty-seven percent of students. Up to ninety-five percent of some schools. So the disparities that we have in attendance are wide-ranging, and they vary, and they fluctuate from grade level. You know, whether it's a secondary or elementary. Get secondary, elementary school, youngish, can I? Get younger Friday, get friendly to people, get to the corner, get to the corner. So really what we're looking at is what are the options? We've been trying to go school by school and make those adjustments. And we're finding that because we're such a large organization. And it depends on dynamics of who's out on one day. And the support they might need or their ability to cover one day varies so greatly that we are not able to say. That we can make those adjustments individually. It's probably going to be a district-wide shift that we would have to look at. In the expectation according to the requirements of the state. Would be that we would first of all move to. Online learning on a temporary basis. We would need to have our staff in person to support that. Because we also have to provide in-person as an option. Person learning as an option. So what that model looks like is not necessarily going to be what people saw last year. You know, when we moved to distance learning last year, and people were in that space for, you know, several weeks and months. We now have to provide in-person options for families. We still have to provide food, food service for families, for students, excuse me. So, the difficulty will be, our, our staff will still need to report in person. So that we can cover those students who are coming in. The instruction that the students will receive in person will probably be virtual instruction. There'll probably be sitting in a room with a computer giving them their lesson. From the teacher is also on the computer. Because there are students who need that accessibility at home. As well as those that we have to cover in the classroom. So it's not a, it's not an ideal situation by any means. And in the reality is, is what's the duration of time that we're going to? You know, I mean, because we're now also wrestling with the, the recent announcement from the CDC that. Could move the quarantine time periods from ten days down to five days. And that would make a substantial difference in our ability to support students in their irregular instruction. As well as it would increase our opportunity to have, um, staff available for, for instruction on a regular basis. So we are doing our best right now to hold on. And I will tell you that our teachers, our support staff. Our principals, our very, very thin, and struggling every single day. And of course, our students are struggling as well, um, for the reasons you mentioned. Because of their fear of being in school, um, and then just the challenges of how they're trying to, to navigate when they are out of quarantine. You know, the independence of how to use Google Classroom and access the learning. So, at this point, I'm just letting the board know that we are, you know, constantly evaluating it. And I don't know much longer we'll be able to hold on with this kind of state of, of things. But it's certainly been my priority. And they want to keep our students in the classroom as much as possible. Providing we can provide a safe environment. A quality learning experience. A quality learning experience. Thank you. Chairlison, I got, and I got one more follow-up question. Are we going to see an increase in our vaccination clinics across the district? Excuse me, across the district. I know there's one coming up that I watched on the poll that immediately. Which offered, uh, you might be mistaken, I think it was twelve seventeen. Are we going to see an increase in that occurring across the district? Follows that one is our take-home tests for our students. Are they being distributed equitably across the district? Or how are we figuring out where to, um, distribute those tests to, to what sites? And then that, then, then I really don't have anything else. So, as far as the vaccination clinic. We reported it last, last year, technically last, twenty-one. To be able to offer vaccine clinics in partnership. You know, we do not distribute the vaccines. We work very closely with different organizations. All schools do have, um, an opportunity to request a vaccine. There is a process they can go through now, and organizations can connect. Um, so we're still utilizing that. I, I don't know off the top of my head what that, um, will look like going forward. You are correct, the FDA did approve the Pfizer twelve-three-eighteen booster shot. So I would hope that there will be, um, opportunities for us to, to utilize that in, in our school settings. You know, through partnerships with the Minnesota Department of Health, or what other agencies are out there. But I can't speak specifically as to what that will look like. You know, what we found last time is that it was really based on a request. And so the request was put in, and we coordinated, you know, the logistics of how that could happen. In some cases, we had families coming from across the district to a location to get their booster. And so we weren't able to, to manage that. It was a first-come, first-served kind of thing. Um, but the, the district remains open to supporting those opportunities, um, whenever and by, by however we can. Regarding the testing, um, again. We have a, a limited number that we are able to access. I know the state said they have a lot more, and I know that we've been able to get all those at this time. Um, what we have been doing is we've been prioritizing our staff who are not vaccinated, not required to test weekly. As well as prioritizing our athletes, who have tested, who we know are not vaccinated. And then from there, we have students who are requesting tests. If we have some available, we're able to distribute those. But, um, we have, you know, utilized those, um, at those different schools across, across the district. On availability and demand. So we put out what we have, and we continue to refurbish and redistribute those, those tests as much as possible. But there are, there is a, an opportunity for, um, all citizens of Minneapolis to request, um, tests. In online testing. Thank you.
Director Anderson? Thanks. I want to acknowledge that, that this is just such an extraordinarily difficult time. And every decision here is just fraught with risks and issues that are high. So I just want to start by, I think that it does feel like we have new obstacles every day. And there's a number of factors that are outside of our control. So it's difficult to make decisions in this. Uh, a key piece of this is transportation. Like that, that's really a, a key. We talked about the classrooms, we talked about the staff. Availability, but also transportation will obviously play a factor. Whether we can continue, and that might be. I'm just wondering if you could just expand upon that a little bit about the impact? Just kind of the logistics that are maybe the logistical considerations. Particularly, um, like basically, uh, particularly around maybe the likelihood, or just the challenges or likelihood, I guess. Of around the buses, some might say, can we rearrange staff? Can we rearrange buses to kind of concentrate our, our resources in one, one school, two schools, or an area? Just wondering if you could speak a little bit about the logistics of that.
Yes, thank you for the question, Director. And you all are aware, on Monday, we ended up going to the e-learning day. It really was based on the inclement weather that we had. And the projections to forecast is projected to be minus twenty-four below, or threshold is minus thirty-five below. But given the challenges we've had with transportation. Part two Monday, we were monitoring it very closely last Thursday, last Friday. You may recall, we put out messaging to families saying. We expect there will be delays, those delays will be more from thirty minutes up to three hours if the bus has to be rerouted. And we were able to make it through Thursday, Friday. We do have a number of families who opted to drive their children to school, or they got the path, or they will pay. Have their students or their children remain indoors until the, the route came back around. And then some actually just opted to stay home. Because of the concern. But what transpired over the weekends, we had surge cases in our transportation department. Essentially, further reduced our capacity, um, around, you know, our dispatch, our schedulers, our leadership staff. Director Anderson, your question about can we reroute things? What we're finding is that the people who do some of these very detailed routing. Supervision, kind of rescheduling things. Aren't not available. And you can't have a, a bench, if you will, to say, oh, I've got, you know, X number of routers. And if they're out, or schedulers are out, we can just bring these other people in. It doesn't work that way. It's too specific and too complex. So, what would typically be an opportunity for us to do some rescheduling in a day or two or over. We do not have that capacity right now. So we're essentially stuck with. This is the route, and if it doesn't make it through. It's probably going to be a chance that we won't be able to make those adjustments. So successfully for, you know, the last several months. You know, the last several months. Essentially a theme that I'm hearing, what I'm hearing you say throughout the evening tonight. Because of the unpredictability of all of that. Because of the unpredictability, the high rate of infection of COVID. Because of the day-to-day nature. It's really difficult to adapt. We kind of have to operate with the information we have in front of us day to day. And it really does allow a lot of flexibility. And we kind of have to work with what we've got in front of us and adjust at those new sites. Thanks.
Thank you. Superintendent, one question, follow-up, kind of what, um, Director Jordan was discussing. Um, given, what I heard you say is that we don't really have. Exposing people to COVID at school, but because they've been exposed someplace else. We have the quarantine. Um, I think there are some parents who, because they feel like, um, you know, there, there's a fear that their child. And having a younger child at home. They, um, they don't want to send their child to school. And that's, so they're calling in, um, as if they would, like their child is sick and, and being absent. But then what's happening after fifteen days is they're getting a notice and they're going to be strapped to school because you've been absent. And, and I'm wondering if there's a way that the district can work around that? I mean, given step and shortages, it would seem to be helpful for parents that want to keep their child home to be able to do that? So, just some thoughts.
Yeah, Chairlison, I think you're, um, hitting the nail on the head in terms of the, the point that is happening right now. That families are not wanting to be, um, putting their child. If they believe that that risk, or if they have concerns about their whole family being compromised, you know, and being compromised. So they're wanting to say, I don't want you in school. Um, we did set up an online program this year. But we quickly filled all those positions. And in the district, so now, when we are in quarantine, when students are in quarantine, the only option they have is to access the teachers. Lessons on Google, and so they do that independently. We have set up supports after school. To where there's some assistance that can be provided. But it's on a case-by-case. But again, we do have to report attendance. And so if we have consecutive weeks of students being out, um, not accessing it, and it's not due to quarantine. It's due to a personal choice for families, um, we would certainly want to work with them. But I don't know what those options are. That's part of the challenge you mentioned, also the. We came back, obviously, January third, and before we entered the building, we had a hundred eighty-two cases. COVID before we came back to school. And now it continues to roll. And those individuals find themselves, um, healthier and being able to return to work. We have some that are now, you know, being quarantined and having to go off from work. And like I said, we, we saw those numbers in our, our daily, um, absences. About eighty percent of the absences are due to someone being ill, or having a family member that is ill. And that's not even those who have been identified with COVID. So we're just seeing a, a high number of, of staff not being available. And I will say, I've, I've mentioned, uh, those teacher numbers. That's not even including our ESPs and other. That's not even including our ESPs and other professionals who play a critical role in supporting students.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
I haven't been sick, but I was exposed to somebody who later tested positive and then told I needed to quarantine for a certain number of days. And so, you know, we could have people out for two more weeks just because they've been exposed or maybe not possibly sick. I also heard from some coaches who were concerned about the large number of people showing up at school.
They are limited. 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 They are limited.
The number of fans, that any fans could come and ask if we could, if that was something we were thinking about.
They are limited. 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 They are limited.
What we focused on again is our.
They are limited. 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 They are limited.
And giving them an opportunity to test before they come to the game. To kind of take care of themselves. With regard to spectators, again, that's, it's one of those conversations about.
They are limited. 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 They are limited.
Spectators to our athletes. Our athletes are again being given kind of the necessary requirements of mitigation strategies. And so we talked about it, but at this point, we decided to put our resources and support into.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
But I think it's certainly something we can talk about. The alternative would be that we would go to just not having any spectators in attendance. I mean, we would not be able to manage, you know, select numbers.
Sure. And that's actually what I was asked. Can we say we've got a ban on fans again? And only people coming in are the people who need to be there, the athletes and the coaches.
We could certainly do that. I mean, I think again, the people who are coming to those events are just at calculated risk. And so the alternative would be that if you didn't want to take that risk, you could watch it because our games are live streaming.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
Again, I'm not seeing any evidence that we're having a spread to our students. But know that if people are going to any of those large public events and gatherings, that that's a risk. And that they should be conscientious about what the mitigation strategies are available to them.
They are limited. 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 They are limited.
Exposing other people to that contact.
Thank you. Director Ali?
Director Ali. Thank you very much.
What's your?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Superintendent Graff.
Superintendent Graff.
I do believe that this year.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
This year is different than last year. We have been in this pandemic now for two years, right?
They are limited.
I do believe that we learned a lot from the last year.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
In terms of health wise.
They are limited. They are limited.
Academic performance in terms of social emotional issues for our students and families. And those experience that we learned from last year.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
As we are still in the middle of the pandemic era. So Superintendent Graff, I thank you for your leadership, especially in the areas of social emotional learning.
They are limited.
And I believe that as you're making decisions with these issues. As it has been always, you'll be using all the necessary tools such as the guidance from the CDC.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
I always believe that.
They are limited. 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 They are limited.
That's number one.
They are limited.
Academic, which is second.
They are limited.
That's the way I see it. And it's also, now we have so many resources that we did not have last year.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
Even to get the mask was clearly.
They are limited. They are limited.
Now we have, you know.
They are limited. Vaccinations in place. They are limited.
We have the masks.
They are limited.
We also have a lot of, uh, uh, guidance coming from the, uh, our healthcare professionals.
They are limited. 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 They are limited.
I'm available for you at any time.
They are limited.
But we have to also wait in every angle.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
Our own students, our own children. Are they also safe at home? You know, if you feel like school's not safe for the children, the question is also, what about at home?
They are limited.
Analysis. Again, I'm not.
They are limited.
And I respect those who are in the field, you know? Whatever guidance you come from the healthcare professionals, I will certainly follow that.
They are limited. 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 They are limited.
So the decisions we're making, we made last year.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
Should not be the same decisions we're making this year. But again.
They are limited.
Something that.
They are limited.
We have to rely on the leadership and the guidance recommendations.
They are limited. They are limited. They are limited.
And I support you, but whatever guidance you come from, our healthcare professionals, organizations. Come through you, I will fully support.
So that's it. I'm going to leave. What's your?
Generalson, if I may, Director Ali, thank you for your comments.
Generalson, Director Ali. I failed to mention that we do continue to meet with our regional support team. Which consists of representatives from the Minnesota Department of Education, Health Arena, Arena of Minneapolis Health Department.
We have a meeting actually scheduled for this week to evaluate the CDC's recommendations. Move from ten days in a quarantine to five days in a quarantine, which many surrounding districts have already moved to. In addition to that, you brought a really important point in consideration where I shared numbers that we have ranging from forty seven percent of students being in attendance to ninety five percent of students being in attendance. So a shift to online learning outside of what we have now. Using those students will still have to have access to school. So that is the requirement. We can't just say everyone has to now move. Because there are students and there are families that do not have the capacity to support those children at home. They still need meal coverage. They still need a space for them to do their work. What will look vastly different though from last year is if they are in school, we're not going to be able to probably provide that in person traditional interaction instruction. Because we have students. We're also remote that will need that online support. So it really is quite different than what we did last year.
Because of the mitigation strategies that we have, as well as we do not have the governor's executive order. That was very explicit about how we needed to deliver those services and how we could. But long now, as I mentioned earlier, it does require us to have in person as an option for students. And the only way we're going to be able to do that is if we have our staff in the building. Where's last year when we were able to say you could work remotely if you wanted to. But that's going to be a challenge for us this year because we will have students who need to be in person and who need supervision. And they will need meals. And we still have to provide transportation to get them to school. The only piece I would say is that this type of shift. Would not be, you know, we're going to do this for a quarter. That's not what we would be looking at. Because there's the potential that. Because this is so dependent upon our staffing availability. And those numbers I gave you. The duration of that quarantine looks like is ten days now and it's a potential that it can lead to further. We certainly want people in person and working when they're healthy. But it wouldn't be that we just see so many people out for a few days because they're not well and. What we're finding based on some of the recent data that people are not feeling well for a few days, they need their quarantine period and some are done even. But are not able to work. So those are all considerations that we're evaluating and I just wanted to reinforce how amazingly dedicated our staff have been to work and navigate through this. From all the teachers who are giving up their time to the teachers who are learning, providing classes to the principals who are. Again, trying to coordinate all this and our support staff. It's had a significant, significant impact on. Just their energy and their ability to stay focused. And so we're evaluating it and I just wanted the board and the public to know that this is something that. We'll continue to monitor and I expect we'll have more information come in in the next couple of days. They are limited. They are limited. They are limited. What's your superintendent, the superintendent, the superintendent? So looking at our school calendar development, as I mentioned in December, our school calendar scenarios. We're bringing forward today for board input and direction. And they're all substantially designed with a few key underlying parameters. Senior officer, you know, human resource, Mary Sullivan, you're trying, you're trying, you're trying. But I wanted to note that one important constraint is to require minimums for both instructional days and hours in state law. And the minimum variation between the different areas comes from the data we receive from board members. The calendar committee members, our district committees, the district, uh, parent advisory committees, our academic staff. And as we already discussed, you know, a lot of that we have heard that would require that structural days be shifted elsewhere. And you'll see the different areas reflect the range of days added to the end of this year in order to accommodate those competing priorities. So I'm going to ask you, I want to provide overview of the calendar scenarios. And after which we would certainly invite and welcome feedback from the board that we can bring forward for your approval. And if you're a member of the board. We will send you a super calendar. Thank you. What's your superintendent, the superintendent? 给了么他做的谁没的家了别莫一好那么保卫压力家啊有别某的头路二零度了么保保 我也好calendar committee呢来到我们这北日都头路 啊路见龙腾蹦呢 这去莫得先到位叫了么自己他就是了叫木了么孩子的好professional development他 啊好academic achievement他好给没有有跟当到到 他里了么还得有new election day new还得现在注意new没有有跟到他最多 他了么别叫了么晒小子还得呢别好packs parent advisory committee了么孩子带怒啊叫 了我个这兰达叫那边好strategic plan呢 诶呢北宝嘛呢诶木诶叫呃怒少怒爬诶啊你呢来某啊还得个么了叫了么娘呢 这别也到了么晒早好calendar他 头跟到到卡liberty 要别我哦问题头路见都闹少 他少有问题头路the spring break 对别某 好winter the spring break academy别某好一好给还得木叫怒 跟了顶着顶木了呢叫可能可能呢 那真的别叫packs他同反正叫 来了保重啊啊啊嘎其中诶都个呃顶着顶木起来那就一路想跟到啊我们吹的是那种我个叫啊问题真保留别有我这到 叫叫那个好calendar committee呢了某阿贝也空贵什么叫了么还可以来包呢叫要 我好给做了了还得要某一张professional development么龙叫了么做想跟到 但是呢好development呢了节目搞这从on day可能 诶去莫家妞这来了某某professional development一怒 叫你头路想跟当的 这别叫staff呢叫calendar committee那三个别叫staff呢叫esp呢 可了他去啥西啊啊叫怒诶了就觉到多好路那叫叫那我好了就体验什么可了么了么孩子好得路时候爬呀的家啊那晒没有有诶莫要好要跳呢真的叫跳头路时候叫没有这样呢路这个呢呢来一道我后来到给了么还贴到北呃道也空重 贵还得一好老母真的别好买pass了么 要给莫得没有照着跟到好这个呢啊来某一好特别了么晒早还得可别了某的叫给怒爬诶他给了了么就叫给盘的了我个叫你呢个的顶着顶木 跟到一种new indigenous people day 那么叫好professional development呢叫怒呢有就木龙了么就叫想跟当了 来又on day隔壁跟当了来又 这等你到in town了路口的来头路口的走 为啥等你了真的别好academic team老特别了么晒着 有木叫了么叫叫in town的路口的有塔 叫可能也好给保重了真的别buy academic team老搞我这里 我了某测到别好academic plan他好给老们叫没有呢还搞 要别有木叫了么我呢要别要别我里呢要别觉得自己all new到头路走领读呢 这本子all new呢做in town头路想跟到呢别觉得某自己all new 到头怒跟啊路想打 叫个听哦呢且还得带怒rashishan ryan kuperla 啊也快的呢呢不要带怒诶有觉得哦叫没有呢还去莫给地道呢这有了么八车的叫没有给给跟到但是嘛可能呢好有木叫了么 自己都好啊一叫怒啊plow new的头路 走领读 可能为的都好对某好the professional development了都他好 给了叫叫没有呢还他这种呢哈有他这种呢哈有老母他觉得是呢那我以苏某好去后我搞苏某了叫可能也好整家别木了还叫叫那我好了我讲啊怒有没有呢还去都跟到这别啊别路做嘞问题做也个大路走嘞问题做啊这有你一波下就一怒跟到这可能也一好呢啊 做哈pd days 对啊可能这木叫做口的i的口的o 这可能别有木叫了么做做对啊别怎么all new的时本 自己都all new呃别做做做对这木可能 别吵all new到做哈pd day这别好莫得那么自己到头路想搞 叫可能别了么自己all new去去pd day他 真的口的打了一个口的走啊你呢 rashishan啊yan kuperla也elderfellow呢叫别有么自己都 跟到点了么做路走领读 别用自别用自怒斗呢这来用自plow new斗了 这有木个东贼多了别呢叫叫怒呢 那有鸟撞到特别撞到pd day别有木做做mea 他好别有木做做怒发的on day好给爬头路叫怒闹 对古木了么做做人家board access到叫比狗比死啦还得有叫 木做好问题头给他他还得 叫他做叫怒诶叫student contact这这叫怒诶做那库 这嘛里木了叫叫波儿了么保到头路了么晒小子啊谁来叫看传呀的家来给啥的去头年呢路好给还路诶 b呢叫to poly 啊别我好某好pd day了叫人好别啥做 但是是姑娘你啊 好叫怒and non-contact day那叫怒诶去莫给谁地道呢呢 去到的去切结果啥的可能呢有呢你呢啊跟谁到中还呢姑娘好替背呢别叫谁呢你你啥了么八仓他可以血到了么在做可能没背呢谁不能到叫你木好给啥了么做可能黑啊叫谁了好给啥做有这种的家这古中谁的别某路家妞呢那某时候就了了么可别他的包子谁了哈啥了家这古木一好路了么弄了也谁好老么孩子 古有保到的某一好那个有在怒处say mea这呢木去跟到 这不跟到的怒嘛对这这里古啥可能呢有几样一好诶有我到能都跟到到中 这古中也怒pd是 啊还得保到中领导呢是我叫 叫叫caprini 我叫我叫senior officer solvin 呢还有个姑娘中做还得做头路时候都走领读了走了呢女的我超了呢这了么娘好了这得差好时候你有鸟到的诶叫没有了应叫你去妞到了是呢这古啥的可能应该一好诶叫呢有觉得莫叫了么啥做他呢可他过好你啊好诶某哦问题能到叫呢了叫某你呢到这古有木给肉血了么啊给血了么他东西你这行的他这可能晒的路走嘞问题够气呢 可能要头路该什么对in town了呢姑姑了 姑姑姑姑别讲么能到叫这古就啥么可能叫了么还开始我叫 我叫呢到madam chair古就啥了么还我叫 senior officer solvin 诶个了么黑啊到北古我叫都个个木好给呢都叫了么啥做他好了么我好给呃还带木给肉血了么做啊吕海呢他叫叫没有卡叫叫那子 那叫叫卡committee了叫 贴吕海呢可能一好整将了么莫叫了么晒早所以叫没有古中谁啊了么保到可能还得个带给保重呢到处洗了叫我叫呢叫阿里叫叫叫叫 古啥木叫了么还叫好叫叫caprini到还头 做 啊对in town了来别不能到叫谁呢 so far现在肯定呢了去到 去莫叫红子呀呃叫叫子呀古去包内呢都是嘛有古有几叫古都不古都面目跟到呢也头路他有别木跟到问题够背了问题够气呢 叫某别好summer break academy呢头目帮卡了他来 也别叫莫叫没有头目 day多了么做头路见都少了他 给头了跟到summer break academy大给定要头路下哩大了呢叫老好summer给大了呢 这别有觉得啥做可能他诶别妞真的也一好同道路时候呢叫没有等到 summer academy了了要叫帮可能了就到了么个店呢 来要你去啊啊听呢是了得这个了跟到了呢那还特别还个了跟到做都走领读文章的 一叫这开摆了叫这middle school了 为的问路走嘞问题够气呢女也也姑呃是少呢呢这古有还的有还的女的去到波呢叫去操龙也贵还个我这里好听意思他有某可能叫了么还呢呢且啊叫怒诶有可能了呢他 头目做叫summer academy了么呢 那呀别某头这个叫别叫没有呢还某好给帮了么做测到了了给了 也到了一了哦问题做summer break是 头路再爬summer 这别叫没有呢还呢了去莫好给啊你呢了了么某一叫跳呢这好路让诶应某对给八车 那还得先别娘娘的别好summer project用的家 啊day热了他 好summer academy他 step up他去他 所以you are spin喽 但是呢老么孩子都哭呢嘛有呢女的去波呢啊这个有包这别有